Oh, I did send you an email. I, at first I had the, a period after N, so it didn't go through, so I re-capped it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. North Ridgsville City Council meeting is now in session. Today is Monday, February 5th, 2024. Please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to gather together, and we ask you to guide us through our meeting this evening. We thank you for the gifts of mutual respect and insights into the common concerns that we all share. And we ask for your blessings upon our community. In your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Abens?
Here.
Winkle?
Here.
Awig?
Here.
De Vries?
Here.
Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here.
Law Director?
Here.
Engineer?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Clerk of Council?
Here.
Tonight, under the approval of minutes, we have before us the City Council Public Hearing Meeting. I'm sorry, it's the City Council Regular Meeting Minutes dated January 16th, 2024. Do I hear any changes or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved. Please note that Council has also received the Board of Drainage and Flood Control Meeting Minutes dated April 25th, 2023, Parks and Recreation Commission Meeting Minutes dated December 6th, 2023, the Building and Lands Committee Meeting Minutes dated January 16th, 2024, the Civil Service Commission Meeting Minutes dated January 22nd, 2024, and the Board of Zoning and Building Appeals Meeting Minutes dated January 25th, 2024. That brings us to our lobby session. In a moment, I will open the lobby session. As a reminder to those here in council chambers, while the lobby session, in the interest of time, is not meant to be an interactive question-and-answer period, it is an opportunity for the public to address city councils as well as the administration. Anybody wishing to speak this evening, we do ask that you speak from the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record. So at this time, the lobby session is now open. Is there anybody who wishes to address council this evening? Mr. Chapczynski, if you could please state your name and address for the record, at which time your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. My name is Gary Chapczynski. I live at 33699 Browning Drive, beautiful North Ridgsville, Ohio. Here for two reasons. One is I'll be donating platelets again tomorrow, and I invite everybody on the council and the mayor to join me donating platelets in North Ridgsville, also to do the same. It's very good. It's one of the better things I've done. I've earned the shirt by doing so many platelet donations last year. So thank you, and please join me. The second thing is I am the Assistant Voting Manager here at VFW in North Ridgsville. I invite everybody to go to Lorraine County Voting website. You can see the candidates and the issues. And early voting starts February 21st, I believe. And if you do come out and vote at the VFW, you can say hi to me. You are not allowed to loiter, though. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chapczynski. Is there anybody else in attendance who wishes to address council this evening? All right, hearing none, the lobby session is now closed, and we will move on to administrative reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are several pieces of legislation that we'll be asking for the emergency clause on this evening, and we'll go through those as they come up on the agenda. If you haven't signed up for the monthly e-newsletter, you can go on our city's website and sign up for that. The latest edition was just released a couple of days ago, and once again has received some good feedback, just like our January edition. The next coffee and conversation is scheduled for next Monday, the 12th, here in council chambers, from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m. As a reminder, City Hall offices will be closed on the 19th of February for Presidents' Day, which will bump our council meeting back to Tuesday, February 20th. And at this point, I will make the motion to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, to consider the purchase of property, or to consider the sale of property, to conference with the public bodies attorney concerning pending or imminent court action, and preparing for conducting or reviewing collective bargaining strategy.
Second.
All four of those reasons.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swank to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing all the reasons the mayor just gave. Clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
De Vries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will adjourn into executive session.
Everybody's back. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience. We are now back in our regular session. Mr. Mayor, please continue with your report.
Mr. President, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ohio Turnpike will be replacing the bridge deck and installing new parapets, safety fence, and addressing other incidentals for the Begley Road Bridge over the Turnpike. Therefore, Begley Road will be closed from April to October of this year. Exact dates will be determined as we get closer to the closure. The detour will direct traffic to use Lorraine, Cook, and Stearns. The Ohio Turnpike will also be replacing the bridge deck and parapets for the Turnpike Main Line Bridge over Lorraine Road. Work will require intermittent temporary lane closures on Lorraine, as well as intermittent closures of the Turnpike Acceleration Eastbound Ramp and Turnpike Deceleration Westbound Ramp. This work is expected to take place over two seasons, the first running from April to July of this year and then April to July of next year. Route Road is expected to have one lane closure this Thursday and Friday for utility work that St. Peter's Church is doing for their new maintenance garage off Route Road. The hydrant replacement project was recently awarded to Diggers of Ohio, and engineering is anticipating that project to start in March. Engineering's new bridge inspector was recently tasked with inspecting all of our mid-sized culverts, which ODOT does not include in their annual inspection. So this would include everything from approximately four foot to a 10-foot span, culvert span, and we found approximately 40 of these within the city limits. His findings did include one culvert that was in poor condition. This eight-by-six concrete and sandstone block culvert over the Felon Ditch on State Route 83 at the Southern Corp limit was originally built in 1955 and has been found to have missing and displaced sandstone pla— excuse me, sandstone blocks, and will likely need a bridge replacement soon. So you might see that coming up. Lastly, engineering has recently seen an uptick in telecommunications requests to work in the right of way for fiber replacement and upgrades, including regional projects from both Frontier and Windstream. So you may be seeing them out doing work in the not-too-distant future. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director of Finance?
Thank you, Council President. Before council tonight for your consideration is 2024-19, A Resolution Authorizing Fund Transfers. The transfers presented in this legislation were discussed during annual appropriations with the Finance Committee and approved by council. These transfers are done annually to support our capital projects and the city's debt service needs. Also before council tonight is 2024-20, An Ordinance Amending Annual Appropriation. In advance of this meeting, I sent all of council a memorandum detailing each amendment presented here and details for each item within that amendment. Also before council tonight is 2024-21, An Ordinance Allowing ACH and Electronic Transactions. This ordinance is stemming from the Lorraine County Auditor and Treasurer, who have been working to implement subdivision property tax settlements electronically as opposed to paper check. The county has requested each subdivision to pass legislation indicating an authorized person to provide banking information and make changes as needed on behalf of the city. I would like to ask council to consider adopting these pieces of legislation tonight with the emergency clause to provide the Department of Finance the resources necessary to meet our financial obligations. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Please note the council is in receipt of the December 2023 Parks and Recreation Division report as well. We do have one council committee report this evening. Clerk, if you could please read the Building and Lands Committee report?
Building and Lands Committee Report dated January 16, 2024. The committee reviewed and considered 2024-13. The committee motioned to send 2024-13 back to City Council for consideration.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Winkle?
Move to accept this report?
Second.
It was moved by Winkle and seconded by Swenk to accept the Building and Lands Committee report. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed say no? Motion carries. Council has received correspondence. Clerk, if you could please read the correspondence?
Director of Finance April Wilkerson issued a memorandum dated January 24, 2024, regarding the notification of the 2024 water rate increase in accordance with the City of North Ridgsville ordinance number 2665-92.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'd just like to point out that that increase will actually have no effect on rates itself because the percentage is so small that it didn't have an impact.
All right, very good. Thank you. There is no old business or new business on tonight's agenda, so that'll bring us to recess.
Mr. President, move to dispense with recess?
Second.
It was moved by Winkle and seconded by Swenk to dispense with recess. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed say no? All right, we will move on to first readings. Up first is 2024-14.
2024-14, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor of the City of North Ridgsville, Ohio to Advertise for Bids and Enter Into Contracts for a 12-Month Period According to Law and in a manner prescribed by law for the purchase of chemicals to be used by the French Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant.
2024-15?
2024-15, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor of the City of North Ridgsville, Ohio to Enter Into a Contract with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2129 AFL-CIO.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swenk to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-15. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed say no?
Mr. President, move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause to allow this contract to go into effect immediately?
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swenk to add the emergency clause to 2024-15 in order for the contract to go into effect immediately. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed say no? It was then moved by the mayor and seconded by Swenk to adopt 2024-15 with the emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to thank the union negotiating team and the members themselves for their cooperation in reaching an agreement so quickly and with a great outcome for not only them but for the city. It'll address some issues that we have with both retention and attraction of employees, and specifically, in this case, firefighters. But, you know, it's a good result for everyone and excited to get going and moving forward with them and having a great contract in place for everyone and to allow us to continue to provide first-class services to the residents.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swenk?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
De Vries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-nothing, and 2024-15 is adopted.
2024-16?
2024-16, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor of the City of North Ridgsville to Enter Into a Multi-Jurisdictional Agreement with the Cities of Avon and Avon Lake for the joint purchase of a Lenko Bearcat G3 Armored Rescue Vehicle. The total amount will be $375,000, which will include maintenance, repairs, and equipment as needed.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swenk to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-16. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President? If you remember, during the appropriations process, we discussed this purchase of this piece of equipment. This vehicle is used by the SWAT team, and it is something that affects their ability to save lives, their own, in this particular case. You know, it can do things that would put an individual in a bad spot, so this offers a level of protection that we currently are unable to provide. And so we'll be asking for the emergency clause on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional comments or questions? So again, it was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swenk to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-16. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed say no?
Mr. President, move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so that way we can provide not only for the health, safety, and welfare of the residents, but also for the officers themselves.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swenk to add the emergency clause to 2024-16 for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed say no? It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swenk to adopt 2024-16 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avans?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero, and twenty twenty-four dash sixteen is adopted.
Twenty twenty-four dash seventeen?
Twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Ridgeville to enter into an agreement with Stefanik Ayus and Associates for human resource management support and consultation not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars per calendar year.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to amend twenty twenty-four seventeen with the version that's in front of you?
Second.
The motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to amend twenty twenty-four by substitution with the version in front of us this evening. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
We made a couple of changes. There was some conversion goofiness that happened with a couple of the words and a couple of, like, extra commas appeared in places that they shouldn't have been. I'm not really sure exactly how that happened, but it was in the conversion process. But specifically, we did make a change to the one, the second sentence at the beginning. I'm sorry, the third, the third sentence. So there were some questions about the renewal. So this is a five-year contract, and what it does is it renews annually on every January first during that five-year period. The pricing's held during that five-year period, which is the purpose of the contract, but the important part, if there is any issues with this, we have the next two sentences after that where it talks about the termination of the agreement with sixty days' notice by either party. So I just wanted to point that out. It was worded a little wonky in the first version, and that was cleaned up, so it's just really the exhibit itself that changed, not the ordinance itself.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any additional comments or questions? So again, the motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to amend twenty twenty-four seventeen with the version in front of us this evening. Clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avans?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-four dash seventeen has been amended.
Mr. President, move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to dispense with the second and third readings for twenty twenty-four dash seventeen amended. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President, I'd like to just go into a little bit of an explanation as to how we arrived here and with this particular firm. Back in October of last year, Finance Director April Wilkerson sent out a request for qualifications out to the human resource world, and we wound up getting six submissions sent to us. And of those, only two of those six were actually located in Ohio. We wound up, April actually narrowed down the list to interview three firms, and one of those firms was located in Indiana. They had a, an office in Columbus. Then we had two other firms, the other two that are located in Ohio, that we had Law Director, Finance Director, and myself interviewed those three firms. There were different deficiencies with two of the firms, whether they had more of an HR component or more of a legal component, and they were missing the other piece or part. And then with the firm that we've chosen here with Stefanik Ayus, they, they had a comprehensive offering where they covered not only the HR component but also the law component. Their firm also does litigation, they also do workers' comp, so there's a couple of different things that they offered well above and beyond some of the other firms. And when we interviewed them, you know, we went through their proposal and, like I said, it was extremely comprehensive. The level of service that they were able to provide over anybody else made them stand out all on their own just from that perspective. But one of the other pieces, parts, that made them stand out even more was the idea that they could send an employee to the city one day a week for seven hours a day, where one of the other firms could do that but only for four hours a day. So that was another plus. And then the third plus would be that their proposal came in much lower from a price-cost standpoint than the other two firms. So, you know, as I mentioned, there were some deficiencies in the other firms, though the pieces that they were missing were extra costs, and they were starting off at a higher price than what Stefanik was offering. So, you know, it really came down to those three, you know, main factors as to why we chose them. As you're probably aware, we spend a lot of time on human resource issues with, you know, as many as employees that we have. They seem to arise on a daily basis, sometimes multiple times in a day, and so, you know, we've been going through this process, like I said, since back in October. You know, we've discussed it at appropriations last year that we were going down this path. It's, it's not a surprise to any of us in the room that we were going in this direction. And so, you know, we've arrived at this firm, we'd like to get them started as soon as possible. We are missing some key parts to our operations that they can create, and, and they certainly fill a need that we have that we currently are not filling, so I will ask for the emergency clause for this as well.
Appreciate the explanation, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional comments or questions? So again, it was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to dispense with the second and third readings for twenty twenty-four dash seventeen amended. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to adopt twenty twenty-four dash seventeen amended with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avans?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and twenty twenty-four dash seventeen has been adopted.
Twenty twenty-four dash eighteen?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement to purchase a drone for the North Ridgeville Police Department at a cost estimated to be three thousand four hundred twelve dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for twenty twenty-four dash eighteen. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President, similar to the Bearcat that we just passed, this is a tool that the police department can use that will potentially save lives. You know, drones these days are multifaceted and can do a lot of different things. One of the things that we've talked about in the past, if you remember, there was a woman that was lost in the woods not too long ago. Something that the drone can do is, is look at heat signatures and fly over an area that would, you know, be able to find a person much faster than officers combing the woods. So, you know, this is one of those lifesaving tools. You know, normally, as you might have noticed, an item worth or costing three thousand, almost thirty-five hundred dollars, you know, wouldn't necessarily come to you, but they're pulling this money out of their law enforcement trust account, which specifically says that there has to be approval by a city council to spend the money. So, you know, as this being a lifesaving tool, we figured, let's get that to them as soon as possible so they could start putting it into a use, and they've also mentioned that, you know, there are other uses outside the police department that we'd probably be able to use it for that would be valuable as well. So I will ask for the emergency on this one as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swank?
Can I ask you that, Mayor, are they gonna have training on this thing? Is there gonna be like a particular officer that's gonna be assigned to fly the drone?
I, I believe they've identified an officer who's going to be specifically trained for this, but there'll be a couple of people trained on how to use it.
And is that gonna be any additional monies or?
I believe there is some training covered by the purchase price. I don't remember how much.
Thank you.
Are there any additional comments or questions? So again, it was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for twenty twenty-four dash eighteen. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so we can put this piece of equipment in place to improve the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to twenty twenty-four dash eighteen for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to adopt twenty twenty-four eighteen with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avans?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing, and twenty twenty-four dash eighteen has been adopted.
Twenty twenty-four dash nineteen?
A resolution authorizing fund transfers.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Motion to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for twenty twenty-four dash nineteen. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no.
Mr. President, motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, motion to add the emergency clause, the reasons stated earlier by the Director of Finance?
Second.
Excuse me.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to twenty twenty-four dash nineteen for the reasons stated earlier in the meeting by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no. It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to adopt twenty twenty-four dash nineteen with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avans?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing, and twenty twenty-four dash nineteen has been adopted.
Twenty twenty-four dash twenty?
An ordinance amending ordinance number six-one-two-one dash twenty-twenty-three of the city of North Ridgeville, Ohio, providing appropriations for the period commencing January first, twenty twenty-four and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Motion to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Avans to dispense with the second and third readings for twenty twenty-four dash twenty. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, I'm sorry, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, motion to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated earlier by the Director of Finance, compare bills on time.
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Avans to add the emergency clause to twenty twenty-four dash twenty for the reasons stated earlier by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no. It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Avans to adopt twenty twenty-four dash twenty with the emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avans?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing, and twenty twenty-four dash nineteen has been adopted.
Twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one?
An ordinance allowing ACH and electronic transactions.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Motion to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for twenty twenty-four dash twenty. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, motion to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated earlier by the Director of Finance, compare bills on time.
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Avans to add the emergency clause to twenty twenty-four dash twenty for the reasons stated earlier by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no. It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Avans to adopt twenty twenty-four dash twenty with the emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avans?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing, and twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one has been adopted.
Twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two?
An ordinance amending exhibits A, B, and C of ordinance number six-zero-six-five dash twenty-twenty-three.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two. Comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to dispense with the second and third readings for twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two. Comments or questions?
Mr. President, under Finance Director's memo to council, there was some reasons about crossing guards and some issues with part-time employees that we're trying to correct with this legislation, so we'll ask for the emergency clause on that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any additional comments, questions? It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to dispense with the second and third readings for twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two. Comments or questions?
Mr. President, under Finance Director's memo to council, there was some reasons about crossing guards and some issues with part-time employees that we're trying to correct with this legislation, so we'll ask for the emergency clause on that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any additional comments, questions? It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to dispense with the second and third readings for twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated in the memo by the Finance Director.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to add the emergency clause to twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to add the emergency clause to 2024-22 for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no? It was then moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to adopt 2024-22 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing, and 2024-22 has been adopted.
2024-23?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Orchard, Hiltz, and McLemott DBA OHM Advisors for professional engineering services not to exceed $100,000. Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-23. Are there comments or questions?
Mr. President, from time to time, we hire outside engineering firms to assist us with some of our engineering work. This is an opportunity to get some more of that assistance. The amount obviously is larger, and we're looking to hire somebody to help us get through some of the backlog of work that we have in the engineering department. And we're looking to do that immediately. There's several projects that we could use some help on and just some general work that we could use some help on as well. So we have a firm and particularly an engineer in that firm that we have targeted that could help us the most, and so we're looking to get this moving and so we can get some of our engineering projects moving as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any additional comments, questions? Again, it was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-23. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed say no?
Mr. President, move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so we can get the engineering backlog addressed sooner rather than later.
Second.
Which affects the health, wealth, and safety of the community. Sorry.
Thank you. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2024-23 for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed say no? It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to adopt 2024-23 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing, and 2024-23 has been adopted.
2024-24?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Ridgeville to enter into an agreement with Go-To-It for network components and equipment without public bidding in an amount not to exceed $160,000. Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Move to amend 2024-24 with the version that is in front of you?
Second.
The motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to amend 2024-24 with the version at your places this evening. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, the changes that we made to the ordinance itself changed the title to more accurately reflect what we're doing here. Mentions some of the previous agreements that we've made most recently with both voice services and fiber internet services. This is to purchase equipment to make those voice and fiber internet services operational. The biggest impact would be to the police station. We had a plan for a couple of different reasons. That plan was not working, and we had to pivot it. And once we pivoted, you know, last time we were before you to make those changes to voice and fiber internet, now we are pivoting to equipment purchases. This addresses some of those changes that are going to affect us citywide, not just at the police station. But the primary driver of this change is the activity that's going on at the police station. So in order to have them open in a relatively short timeframe, we need to do this, and it made sense from a financial aspect to make those changes citywide at the same time. These changes will not only address operational issues, but also improve security issues as well. That's why we're bringing this before you, and we'll ask for the emergency clause.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any additional questions regarding the motion to amend? All right, so again, the motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to amend 2024-24 with the version in front of you this evening. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swank?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Avens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
2024-24 has been amended. Mr. President, move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-24 amended. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed say no?
Mr. President, move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so that way we can get these network components up and operational for the new police station or for the remainder of the city.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Winkle to add the emergency clause to 2024-24 amended for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause, all in favor say yes?